Okay. Jennifer, would you read the statement in connection with our remote meeting?
Sure, the meeting is being convened tonight in accordance with recent amendments to the New York State Open Meetings Law, which allow for this virtual style of meeting without requiring an in-person meeting place or attendance by members of the public. That amendment to the Open Meetings Law was scheduled to expire on January 15th, and it has been extended by legislation from last week. I believe it was actually signed by the Governor's Office today, if not perhaps late Friday afternoon. So that legislation now runs with the Governor's Executive Orders declaring a state of emergency regarding the COVID-19 pandemic. So there is no date certain for the expiration of that amendment to the Open Meetings Law. Instead, for as long as the Governor's Executive Orders in place, we'll be allowed to convene in this way without publicly noticing each of the individual planning board members' location.
Right. Okay, thank you, Jennifer. So we'll bring the meeting to order here. Hi, Tom, how are you?
Good, thanks.
And our first item is a public hearing. And this is the public hearing for Sweet Green. This is 480 North Bedford Road. This is an application for a site development plan for outdoor dining cafe. I'm pleased to announce that pursuant to our last meeting, our proposal here is that this applicant will be here opening up with a public hearing and also with a resolution drafted so that we might only see, don't take it personally, but only see the applicant one time, which is probably great news to the applicant, of course.
We don't take it personally.
Well, good, I'm glad you don't. That's good. So in any event, is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion is carried.
We're supposed to say yes.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so are you able to put some plans up on the board? Just showing us what you're doing in case there are also members of the public looking in on this.
Sure, I can do that.
Mr. Chairman, would you like me to explain why the application is before you?
Sure, yes, please, thank you.
So in the town code, there is a provision for a sidewalk cafe in the business retail zoning in the town because this is the Office Park Retail Overlay District at Chapical Crossing. That regulation doesn't as of right apply. We had never contemplated sidewalk cafe when this was being approved, when it was before you for site plan approval. So it's back before you to approve the outdoor use that Ms. Donmeyer is going to be speaking of.
Thank you, Sabrina.
Yep, thank you.
So I have the site plan up currently. Can everyone see the screen?
Yes.
The Sweet Green location is going to be right here in this area. The outdoor dining is proposed in, there's an alleyway between kind of a pedestrian alleyway and between these two buildings. And that's where they're proposing the outdoor dining area. Here is an enlarged image of the outdoor dining plan showing the layout, the tables, the chairs, clearances. I think the Fire Marshal's already reviewed. And we are in compliance with all the clearances. We've got a couple of renderings showing what it may look like when it's complete. And an exhibit showing the furniture that is planned on being used there.
Right. Good, okay. And are there certain months that this outdoor cafe would operate?
Um, I believe Lauren, the Sweet Green Design Manager is on as well. In some cases, we've asked to utilize the outdoor dining area all season or all year. Typically, they're seasonal, but I'm not sure what the plan is for this particular location. Lauren, are you on?
Yeah, hi, this is Lauren from Sweet Green. I work on the design team. In cold weather climates, we typically do a seasonal patio. The average span of that is usually April to late October, early November. We find that that's when our customers are most frequently dining outside. That has actually extended now because of COVID. People are more likely to dine outside the colder it gets. But we find that from the months of like December through March, people for the most part are not dining outside.
And during those off-season times, will the tables and chairs be removed and stored off-site?
Yes.
Does the town have any provisions prohibiting use year-round if they choose to do so?
I'm unaware of it. Sabrina, Bob?
I did not see it in the code.
I think the biggest concern during the winter use is going to be with snow removal and ice and safety because it is a public travel way. Or not a public travel way, it's on private property. But because it is an access way, in the wintertime, we need to make sure that there's access.
It doesn't say it can't be there all year, though.
Correct, correct. But I think we would want provisions within the approval. And you know, Bob, I'm sure as part of your permitting or licensing of this, you can include provisions to ensure that that is maintained as a pathway.
Yeah, I think that they would prefer, we would prefer to have the option if we so choose. So if we could write that in, you know, that would be fantastic.
Yeah.
That could occur with your approval, Bob.
Right. Also, too, the only thing it really says in here is when it's not in use, that all the items should be put in a safe storage area.
Sure.
Which is common sense.
Do you anticipate using any of those outside heaters to extend the season?
We don't typically use the outdoor heaters. We're a fast casual restaurant chain, so people are typically ordering and dining fairly quickly. So in our fleet currently, we don't use those. That's not to say that we won't in the future, but at this time, no.
I have a question. How is the food going to be served? Is it going to come out the front door where the road is and then they have to hustle around the corner?
So this is a, people would kind of order their meals on what we call our frontline, pay for their food. It's kind of like Chipotle-style ordering where you then get your bowl and you're taking it outside if you're choosing to dine. So we're not doing full-service dining on this patio.
And is there any easy access to restrooms?
Yes, there are two restrooms located within our space.
And they're inside the main building or are they accessed by along here?
They are located inside of our space, which is accessible via either the main entrance or the entrance off of the parking lot.
Where are the refuse stations for diners to throw away there if they're going to be using paper goods to dine? Where are they?
We have trash located inside. I can also add an exterior trash unit outside. Sometimes it's the town's preference to use the, like, shopping center-provided trash on the exterior. They don't want all different types of trash cans placed along the sidewalk. But we are happy to accommodate whatever would be preferred.
I would think would be appropriate to have it within this dining area, a spot or two, maybe one for recycling, maybe one for trash. Not a dumpster, but just a small thing. And then you guys, Sweet Green, would take care of, you know, disposing this in your dumpster wherever that's convenient. And I think we have provision for that.
Yeah, we have a standard configuration of a small recycling and small trash bin that we can place outdoors.
Can I just clarify? Sorry, Bob, did I cut you off?
Please, please.
Just a question and a comment, just clarifying location. The front of the store is across the big parking lot from Whole Foods, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, and just a comment on the seasons and the seasonal aspect of outdoor dining. You certainly probably know better than I do, but that whole world has changed dramatically. I ate outside today. I wasn't happy about it, but I was happy that there was an option to do that. I was in the city today. And so I would, from my perspective, not want to see a limitation on when outdoor dining is permitted here.
The, actually, those were all preliminary thoughts I had, but my main concern on this is just making certain, I think we're going to include some language in our resolution, is making sure that that access in that alleyway remains open and unfettered, uncluttered to folks who want to come from the rear parking lot to the front stores or going across the street to Whole Foods, et cetera. So I think it's about 12 feet wide. I think you're proposing to take six feet. But the issue I always find in these kinds of setups is execution and maintenance of the line. And not having chairs strewn all over the place as, you know, patrons leave, et cetera, or as they reconfigure, this is very nice now, but as they reconfigure tables for their convenience, moving tables around, et cetera. We will want to make certain that we maintain, I think our minimum is that we have to have at least five feet. But I think you're proposing actually close to six, six and a half feet, keeping that open. I don't know how to best do that. I mean, I don't, I'm not really proposing that we put an ugly white line now there, something like this. But can you talk to us about how you guys maintain, will maintain that space and make certain that we don't have clutter in the pedestrian access way?
Yeah, so our store teams are aware of all the permitting that goes into our seasonal patios. So we share these plans with them so that they keep everything set up the way it's intended to. For this particular location, we do have an option to add a railing, which would cage in our patio area a little bit more. That being said, it would then infringe on the pedestrian pathway another foot. So looking at this, my thought was to keep it a little more open to the pedestrian sidewalk so that we were giving as much clearance as possible. The railing would certainly keep us more restrained, but would then also add more of a pinch point for the customers passing through that alleyway.
I don't know how you would actually be able to put a railing in at the six-foot line because then you, behind that railing, you couldn't move.
Yeah, so we wouldn't be able to.
You would have to take up more room of the, more of the six-foot in order to just give a passage past the tables. So let me ask you, is this the gray area which is indicated in this drawing? Is this an extension of the leasable area from the Chapco Crossing Management? Or is this space which is just being offered to you for you to use?
I don't believe we're paying additional square footage for it. No, they're just offering it for us. Is that correct, Lauren? Do you know?
Yeah, to my understanding is that it was just presented to us as we have this very wide patio that you can pursue a patio exterior seating.
Okay, the reason, one of the reasons I ask has to do with the concern about snow removal. Is the property manager not responsible now for snow removal on the common areas of the development? I think they are.
They are.
So I'm not sure that the requirement to be certain that that area is cleared of snow should, or could even, you know, devolve down to this tenant. I would think it would remain with the, which I think is the right thing to do with. I think it should remain with Chapco Crossing as part of their snow removal, you know, program.
I think from the town's perspective, as far as snow removal, whether it's the tenant or the management company, it just needs to be maintained as a clear passageway.
Right, right.
Right, I'm just suggesting it's not necessarily the obligation of this applicant to do that. I think it's probably the obligation of, I mean, I don't know where we're going with that concern in terms of a resolution. I understand the concern, but I think the responsibility probably remains with Chapco Crossing.
Well, I had jotted down a couple of notes as the board was talking about that item as possible language to add to the resolution. And I was thinking, in the condition where it says that the applicant shall provide the hours of operation and the anticipated length of time that the sidewalk cafe will be in use, to add something to the effect of that provided adequate snow and ice removal is provided, the planning board doesn't object to year-round use of the sidewalk cafe. So it's not putting the obligation on the tenant. It's just saying as long as it's provided by whoever, whether it's the tenant or the management company, as long as it's provided, you have no objection to year-round use.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Yeah, I agree. That's good.
Okay.
Jennifer, do you have language for the, you know, our discussion that we had earlier today? Did you and Sabrina and Bob come up with some language in terms of what we're going to insert into the resolution?
I have a proposal. Insertion, I apologize, I didn't circulate it in advance to Sabrina and Bob. But it is that the applicant shall add a note to the site plan to state that a minimum clearance of six feet shall be provided for the pedestrian accessway at all times.
Okay, I think that's fair.
Is that in the bottom, whereas on the resolution?
That would be a condition so that before Chairman Kirkwood signs the site plan, they have to add a note to the plan that says that a minimum of six feet clearance shall be provided for the pedestrian accessway at all times.
Six is good because four is too little. Because you just have two people walking side by side. That's four feet.
Yep.
And if somebody's coming the other way, well now, you know, hey, you're supposed to stay how many feet away from people?
Yeah, I understand from Bob Seoli that a minimum of five is required by code. They're proposing a little over six, so I thought six would be a fair.
We have to fix that in the draft resolution, though. We'll get to that next, right?
Yeah. Yep. Any other questions or comments on the application before we see if there are any public comments?
Well, I think it's a great example for jumping to the, you know, the regular meeting with everything is. It's good. This is a good start.
Okay. Pam, are there any hands up, anyone in the public wishing to weigh in or question on this application?
I do not see any digital hands raised at this time, no.
Okay, does the applicant have any additional questions or comments?
I don't. Lauren, do you have anything?
No, I'm all set.
Great. Okay, is there a motion then to close the public hearing?
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes. Yes, okay, yes, we'll take that as an aye, okay. Motion is carried for zero. And we have, we'll go now to our next matter on the agenda, and that is the resolution that the staff is prepared in connection with this application in anticipation of approval in closing of the public hearing. So we have those amendments that Jennifer has proposed. Does anyone else have any questions or comments?
Yeah.
Okay.
Maybe I missed it. In the third whereas, it says that the outdoor cafe is adjacent to building's D and E. Which are buildings' D and E on both sides of the alleyway? If that's the case, we can't allow it to be, the thing to be adjacent to both buildings. It has to be adjacent to one of the buildings. So I think the word adjacent needs to be changed.
Or we can add, locate an outdoor sidewalk cafe in the alleyway between buildings' D and E.
Well, but then it could be in the middle, right? One could interpret it that way. I would suggest that you say it's adjacent to whatever building it is, D or E. You know.
Because you're saying it's, you're saying because it's not in the middle.
Well, because it gets down to the last whereas in the page where we have to change some of these numbers and some words to help me understand it better.
But I think that's fine, right? I mean, adjacent to whatever building it is and as per the plans, which shows exactly where it is.
Good, good addition. Thank you. All right. Anybody have anything else on the first page? Because I do. Okay, I'm confused. You know, it, we have, we'd like a six-foot walking area between the table area and the building, not the curb. The curbs, the curbs, one curb is, you know, is 50 feet away or 30 feet away. And I don't see how the word curb gets in there. And then we say we have a four-foot aisle providing access to any establishment. What does that mean? Is there anticipation that there'll be doors into buildings on this, in this alleyway? I'm confused.
Yeah, so I think we have to update some of those figures.
Yeah, so those items are things that are required by Chapter 104 of the code. Not necessarily what the applicant, the applicant is proposing, obviously, more than the five-foot walking area. Between the.
Yeah, we're reciting one.
The minimum.
We're reciting the code requirements.
But that's the minimum. We can, we have the right to ask for more.
Yes, that was on later on.
Yep.
No, I would think that if you're going to go with five, then you're, then you're, you know, you're going to have some brushing by, six feet gives you a chance to have two people going one way, one person going the other way without, you know, saying, excuse me, could you move or something?
Right, the minimum code requirement is five, and then in the conditions, we're going to require six.
Thank you.
Right.
All right, and that's good for the first one, but the second one, where is this aisle providing access to any establishment? What is that? We already have an aisle, but now we have another aisle.
Outdoor, in Chapter 104, it speaks to a sidewalk cafe located on a sidewalk adjacent to a roadway. This is a recitation of the provisions within Chapter 104, which talk about a four-foot aisle providing access to the establishment. This is not applicable in this situation.
Yeah, that's if it's going to the front, excuse me, that's if it's going to the front of an entrance. I don't think that applies in this case.
No.
So it should be taken out, as Dick said.
I'm wondering if, to make it less confusing, perhaps, we omit all three of these bullet points and just say that it's, it'll be consistent with the dimensional requirements of Chapter 104.
That's a good idea.
I like that, except that I want the six feet. You know, so you can say it's going to be in consort with 104, with the exception that, you know, it's a six-foot walking area between the table area and the building E, whatever it is, I mean.
That was the language that Jennifer had proposed, I think, before on those two issues, the snow clearing as well as the six-foot alley access.
I mean legally, the whereas clauses are just informational, for informational purposes, and the conditions are what has the legally binding, you know, those are what are binding and kind of take precedence over the whereas clauses. If that helps.
Well, it does. I mean, it's good to have the regs and everything like that, so. Good, but here we have, you know, the right to have an exception that the applicant has offered.
Yep, and that will be a condition.
Good, right.
All right, second page, anybody have anything?
Nope.
I have an issue with the one, two, three, four, five, six, seventh wherashes.
On page two?
On page two. In a way, the planning board is familiar with and has inspected the said property because I think, I know, my wife and I have walked in that alleyway, so I'm quite aware of it. But it's not been done for two years that we've, we've had such a walk. I think we are familiar with the property, but do we have to say that we inspected it when we didn't inspect it?
No, if you are more comfortable taking that out, then that's fine. You could just say that the planning board is familiar with the property.
I'm happy with that.
Okay.
All right. And dasasalis.
Okay, good. And then we have those, that language, Jennifer, that we'll be adding as a condition. Those will be what, conditions nine and 10?
Yeah, the snow storage, yeah, the snow and ice removal, right, that you have no objection to year-round use provided snow and ice removal is provided. And the note about the six-feet requirement. I also noted in condition number four, you may want to change that to say the applicant shall know on the site plan the location of garbage and recycling receptacles. Right now, it just says garbage, but you're also talking about recycling receptacles as well.
Yep. Yep.
Good.
Whereas clause on the first page should be bold.
Which one?
The fourth whereas clause.
I already noted that.
Yeah, okay.
That's the most important change.
That was the trick one that set up for us to find.
Kidding.
Yep, great. Anyone else? If not, is there a motion to adopt the resolution as amended?
No moves.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes, Tom?
Yes.
Yes, okay, yes, I, yes, whatever, only one of those, though. So motion is carried and the resolution is approved for zero. Thank you very much, and thank you for being our first one-and-done application. At least a long time, yep.
Thank you.
Okay, we move now to our third item, and this is the request for an extension of approval at 767 King Street, the Chiselhurst subdivision lot number six. This is a request for an extension of approval, site development plan 767 King Street, New York Route 120. So anyway, Sabrina and Bob, I think, can fill us in. Dennis is online if you really, if you want to hear about that, which I think is actually very interesting.
Yeah.
As respects this application. So Sabrina, are any objections, any problems with the extension?
I have no problems with the extension. I think Bob can give you more localized knowledge as to where they are in the process right now is in regards to satisfaction of their conditions of approval.
Great, yes, yes, thank you. We've been working diligently with Jennifer and Mr. Rabel to get the conditions done for the site plan, and I'll review it tomorrow to let them know what's required for the VP, but they're doing a diligent effort to get the plan signed. And I have no objection to the request.
Super. Super. Uh, one thing did come up in our earlier discussion that was, uh, timing on the tree clearing, just to reiterate. And Dennis, perhaps you can just, you know, inform the board on what our concern was or is. And I'm sure that the applicant's aware of it, but, uh, for the benefit of the board members, I think would be interesting if you filled them in a little bit on, on the season for cutting.
Uh, sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, so I know in this resolution that. Uh, I know Mr. Abel, you're probably familiar that we had a window, which. I guess in the business, we affectionately call the bat window. And that's just to eliminate the potential for, should. Uh, the species of Indiana or northern long ear bat use that particular forested area, any of those trees. As, you know, the, the key is for summer roost habitat. That's why the window tends to fall between November first and March thirty first, because bats are not anticipated to be there. And frankly, um, from some additional. Work and discussions with other applicants, including DEP who've done more extensive surveys on potential habitat utilization. We're probably at the, just outside the, the southern limits of where we would anticipate. Uh, any potential uses, uses during the season, but still, it's just a. Um, you know, precautionary measure that, you know, if you're removing trees during that season, you're, you're not gonna, you know, potentially impact. Uh, those bats directly, and that's, you know, something that you just wanna, in accordance with the Endangered Species Act. Prevent an incidental take, and that's why we have what we call the, the bat window. So I just know that, you know, most applications, when they're, you know, sort of ready to quote unquote move forward. Uh, you know, either for, uh, applications, you know, with our department and building and whatnot, or even, you know, in receiving actual permits. You know, that would seem like one of the first activities that would potentially have to be done on such a site. And, you know, obviously just to keep that in the back of your mind in terms of the timing. Um, because as I said, you know, that, that window is, is really going to be, you know, from November, you know, through, through March. I, I believe that's how we wrote it up in the resolution, so I just wanted to have that, you know, sort of bring it to the forefront to have in the back of your mind, if that makes sense.
Absolutely. Uh, one of the extensions we're here for tonight is tree removal, so it makes total sense to me, Dennis, and I will be sure to emphasize that for the clients.
Great, thank you. Okay, uh, any other issues, questions about this, uh, request for a time extension?
Yeah, I'll, just a comment, it seems like it's a long, long time and. You know, that this, this project has been going and I sure would love to have it really well done as planned. And finished soon, so I. Uh, I hope that. This is the last extension.
Yeah, you know, I, we, we'd love to see this move forward quickly as well. I think, um, you know, the plan has been submitted for signature. We're now working on the building permit criteria, which. You may recall with a site this unique, they were. Many criteria, but we are working with all of our consultants to try and move this thing forward.
All right.
Good.
Thank you, Mr. Vrabel.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? If not, is there a motion then to grant the requested, uh, the requested extension? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Hi, yes. Hey, motions carry, thank you, and, uh, good luck with the, uh, the final things that you have to finish here.
Thank you very much, have a nice night.
Very good, yep, take care. We have now our next item, and this is a proposed referral from the town board. This is the local law, a lot line amendment provision. Which is a proposed referral of local law to, uh, chapter sixteen, one thirteen, the code of town, uh, of Newcastle. Concerning lot line adjustments. So I hope everyone's had a chance to take a look at the proposed law. This is very early. Uh, the town board has not yet, I don't believe, set a public hearing at this point. So this is very preliminary at this point. Uh, one item that did come up, uh, on this. And, and why it's kind of preliminary is I think, uh, staff is gonna work and provide us with a. Like a sample checklist of the sorts of things that Bob will be looking at. Because this would be something that the town engineer would be able to administer administratively approve. So I thought it would be a good idea just to get a good flavor for us as well as the town board in terms of kinds of things that the town engineer will require to look at. And it might also be something that will, you know, provide us a list of things that, uh, if you go beyond this, uh, that there might be a problem. I, I will tell you that one of the, the concerns I had in here, a couple of things with language, but one of the concerns I had here is apparently. Uh, there are no provisions in our code that provide for a flag lot to be determined to be non-conforming. And, um, you know, I, I think the, the whole rule and law on flag lots is, is kind of gray. And that would be something that, uh, you know, one person's interpretation of a flag lot is not necessarily consistent with someone else's. But I think that that is something that needs to be somehow addressed, and perhaps if it's something that Bob determines or any town engineer. Uh, determines is a flag lot, that that might be something that should be either referred to the. You know, uh, whatever board has got jurisdiction, planning board or. Zoning board.
Mr. Chair.
Yep, sure.
If I may, in regards to that, there are provisions in the code that prevent the flag lot. And if you recall, we have had applications where they have wanted to make lot line changes, but the depth. For the distance of the lot, we have certain measurements within the code regarding lot formation that prevent the flag lot. So if somebody wanted to make a lot line change, I believe, you know, the measurements that we currently have within the code. Regarding establishment of a lot, the width dimensions, not just the width at the street. But there's actually a dimensional requirement of the width of a lot that needs to be met. And we've had certain instances in certain applications where that measurement has prevented the subdivision of that. So i- if you recall, a couple of years ago, I forget the name of it, but we had that issue. Um, and they had to redesign that lot line change to ensure that the lot met the dimensional requirements. In addition to the setback requirements, but the dimensional requirements of the depth and the width of the lot.
Yeah, I, I was going through some of the code provisions this afternoon, um, cause Chairman Kirkwood, I, I know you, you raised that. Um, with Sabrina and, and Bob and I and Dennis earlier today. And, um, and, and I agree with Sabrina in, in chapter one thirteen, um, in the, the section where it defines. Uh, you know, how, how you create a lot, what, what the, the lot dimensions are. Uh, there are provisions there, they're very convoluted. Uh, they're tough to get through, but, um, they are there, and I think that they, they have the purpose of, of. Flag lots.
Right, and, and I've used them before and advised you accordingly.
But we had a situation in our fairly recent application close to Mount Kisco Country Club. Where after the fact, there was an acquisition of a property and it was a merger of a lot line. In whether it was a flag lot per se, but based on dimension or by performance. Acting and served as a flag lot, it, it caused a good deal of concern for us because it looped property behind another owner. So. Uh, that's why I'm saying, uh, flag lots, I mean, dimensions certainly can help. But there are also ways that these flag lots can be created that it seems to me, just based on our experience, have been created or. Created in terms of, uh, level of performance, uh, that we want to watch outside of dimensions. I, I agree, I, I, if, if that, if the code's in there, that will probably take care of ninety nine percent of them. But the issue that we have on these lot line changes is they're, they're very few anyway. Uh, I think someone mentioned we've had four in the last three years or so. Um, but sometimes when we have them, uh, they can be a little bit tricky.
I was gonna ask, um, yeah, that, I probably should know this and forgive me for not, but. Sabrina or, uh, Jennifer or, uh, Bob. Are there, i- is there a, actually in the code, is there a flag lot as a, that term defined? Or it's, it's just a term that we apply to the conditions that we're looking at? Yeah, so maybe, um, maybe there might be. And I, the, the, the language that you referred to Jennifer and, and Sabrina. You know, probably needs to be reviewed in that context. Uh, I think that there might be better clarity on the subject. If we could actually maybe suggest to the, to the town board that they amend the zoning so that. You know, we, when we, when we see this, we know what we're talking about and the, uh, and how to talk about it. Uh, at, at, at the moment, I think that. In my memory of looking at these things, whenever it seems to come up. We sort of had this, had this conversation, well, gee, is it a flag lot or is it not a flag lot, right, you know, on the board? And some people think it's a flag lot and other people think, well, yeah, but it's not a bad flag lot. And it just gets to be a little bit imprecise, uh, gotta be very frustrating for applicants.
Yeah, and I, I think there's also that distinction that Chairman Kirkwood raised that, you know, even if it doesn't meet sort of the, the, the dimensional. Uh, requirements to, to constitute it as a flag lot. Um, it, it could still function as a flag lot, and I know that's something that the board has talked about on several applications. Where even though it's not technically a flag lot, it could still have the, the, the look and feel and function of a flag lot. Um, so I think there's two different sort of concepts that we're talking about.
Right, exactly, and, and this is where perhaps a definition of flag lot could get to the performance characteristics that I think we're. Were, uh, concerned about.
Yeah.
In addition to what's already in the code.
Yep.
I think we can look into that. Jen, I'd be curious to see if any other municipalities have that definition. Because I, I seem to recall some difficulty trying to define that.
Yeah. Yeah, I know, we've looked.
At the measurements we have.
Yep. Yeah.
So we, we will look into it and see what we can find.
Yeah, agreed.
Yep. Admittedly, it's, it's a, it's a very gray area, a little bit slippery. But, um. Uh, and I, and I know we've had discussions on the board where we've looked at something and someone said it looks like a flag lot and someone else on the board said, I don't think so. You know, what are you looking at? So, uh, of course, the applicant, so I'm very happy to weigh in on that, uh, the other opinion, of course. But I think that would be helpful, cause that was, that was chiefly my concern, a couple of language things, but I. And, and again, uh, I, I think a whole thrust here is to move things forward a little bit more quickly than they have. Uh, and of course, this is, uh, the town engineer under the, 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 the posed provisions. Still has the discretion to turn something over to the zoning board, if that's, uh, the board that's got the authorization and, and, and. Review or the planning board, maybe ERB, I don't know, I mean, who knows, uh, all kinds of boards are available to the town engineer. For refer on, on so, on certain sticky issues. I don't think, um, you know. A fussy public is necessarily a, a reason for it not to be approved by the town engineer, but I leave that up to the town engineer. In terms of whether or not the, he wants to refer it on to, uh, the appropriate board. Any other thoughts, folks? Again, we'll continue this discussion next time because we'll have the, um. Either an application form or a checklist form that we can look at, and that will give us a little bit more substance to what we're talking about and see where we go. And I, I, I think then we can put together a memo if invited to, uh, to the town board and, and move this on. Alrighty. So I guess we, we said we'd see that again, uh, Sabrina on September, uh, February one?
Yes, February one, and we hope to have for you. One, I, I think Jen and I can work on the, the flag lot issue and have a response for you on the flag lot language. Um, and, you know, kind of resolve that, but we will have for you a draft application or checklist. Um, that will incorporate the required, the, this, the important requirements from the town code. That are consistent with the proposed legislation. Um, so that you guys have a sense of what Bob will be using to review an application that comes in for this approval.
Right, great. Okay, uh, then we have one more item on tonight's agenda, and that is, uh, a look at, at some of the planning board process information drafts. That Jennifer's prepared for us, thank you, Jennifer. And this is a. A great synopsis of the things I should have been doing all these years. And that's probably not done. But, um, and al- also one other thing, um, I, I think would be useful. I, I went to that last, uh, Wolf meeting in December, it was, uh, targeted at planning boards. And there was also not just the rules of procedure, but, uh, there are certain sorts of documents that, uh, planning board members and new planning board members should be provided. Uh, in connection with, uh, so-called, uh, you know, not really training, but at least getting people. Uh, up to speed in terms of, uh, what the codes are reading and changes in the codes and application forms, et cetera. So, um, I think Wolf has got that because they, they were talking about it and they had some sort of, uh. Almost like a training guide, um, so that might be something we can look at also, that's, that's down the future. But I think this is more important to take a look at right now. In terms of, uh, you know, our current procedures, I, all, all kidding aside, I think it really echoes what we, we have been doing for years. And, and, and always do. And, um. For myself, I'm a little bit, um, you know, chagrined and almost embarrassed because it seems to put a lot of, um. Almost too much emphasis on the chair position. I try to keep this as wide open as possible. With the public as well as staff and, and all board members. And I'm, uh, only too happy to be corrected, uh, throughout the course of the meeting, because usually the corrections are absolutely appropriate and on point. But in any event. Um, do we want to run through this very quickly and, and see what are your thoughts?
Yeah, if I could just note, there's two things, um, that I incorporated into the rules of procedure, and I don't know if you want me to go point by point. I'm assuming everybody received it and reviewed it. Um, I don't know if we need to go through page by page, but.
Right.
Um, two things, based on your discussion at your last meeting, um, that I specifically wanted to, to highlight. Was section three B, the conceptual sketch plan review. We tried to include language in there to really encourage applicants to utilize that conceptual sketch plan review. Um, at the recommendation of, of town staff and, and discretion of the chair for, for. You know, um, that is an opportunity for applicants to come before the board. Prior to spending all that time and, and money on engineering costs, landscape, you know. Landscape architect costs and, and all of that. Um, to run their, their concept by the planning board for your input. So, um, that's what we tried to capture in three B. And then in seven B, I think that was it, right, seven, yeah, seven B was, um, the procedure that we just went through. Was with the, the first item on your agenda tonight, allowing the chair, the discretion at the recommendation of town staff. To have an application be on the agenda as a public hearing the first time. Um, the, the first time you're hearing it for the appropriate types of applications. Um, the rest of it, as, as Chairman Kirkwood said, I think just e- echoes really a lot of your current procedures, but puts them all in one place. So applicants and members of the public can take a look easily and, and see, you know, what it is that this board does and how they process their applications.
And I, I really think, um, I mean, we have an example tonight of, of, of one and done. But, uh, I think the three B is something that we really need to press, we really need to market with our applicants when they first come in. I understand, and, and Bob and Sabrina told us last time, very often, when they show up, they've already got something that they've really gone pretty far along. And they're basically, this is what we really want to do, and we've given it a lot of thought, and spent a lot of time and effort, and we think it will work. And, and we understand that, so I mean. But I think if the word starts to get out that we could have that initial sketch meeting, conceptual meeting. Um, I, I, I think we frankly, we haven't even like to name it, but I think we have an application where recently, um. An applicant came in and thought it was gonna be pretty straightforward, pretty straight up, and it turns out, uh, there are some issues. And, um, I, I really feel terribly about it that they've put all kinds of work and effort into it and expense, obviously. So I think that is really something, if, if staff can really sell that or try to, uh, you know, remind people about that. Uh, perhaps we, if we do a few of them, that, well, people will catch on and see that, you know, we're really serious about this, come in. Take our time, uh, look at a sketch, tell you what we think of, or the, uh, you know, the, the problems, the issues. And, uh, see if we can't, uh, you know, have a better experience for an applicant, and if, of course, a more expeditious one. Uh, without, uh, compromising, you know, the hard look that we're required to take on all these applications. I think we have, um. Oh, we had someone who had their hand up, but now they took their hand down. Okay, I just saw that in the chat. In any event, if, if someone's interested in saying something, that's perfectly fine, but if not.
They, they raised their hand again, Bob.
Okay, uh, while we take that comment then.
Okay.
Where it might be.
Let's see. Ms. Moses, you can unmute yourself, please.
Hi, Cynthia Moses from one hundred Glendale. Uh, you might remember me with the Sunshine Home. Hi, Cynthia Moses from one hundred Glendale. Uh, you might remember me with the Sunshine Home process. You can't hear me?
Yeah, we can now. That's better.
Yes.
Okay, um, I. Noticed um, the lot line adjustment. Uh, agenda item on town board. Uh, agenda last week and that it was being referred to you and I had questions about it. And I was hoping that I could throw those questions at you at this point. As you're doing the work to review it and send back your thoughts to the town board. And I don't know if that's appropriate or not, but I thought I'd give it a try.
Well, if it's brief, we can do it. We we have a short agenda. We'll just, as long as you're here and you're. You've actually listened to us thus far. That's fine.
Do I do? It's great to be informed about what's going on in the town. So I do listen. Um, okay, few questions. Um. I was wondering, um, for instance, if you could, uh, remember your Sunshine Home review days. With that in mind, um, there is no. Uh, comment in this proposal that discusses how often someone can. Go and buy twenty feet from their neighbor. There could be many reasons to want twenty feet from your neighbor that have nothing to do with an an additional buildable lot. So for instance, in the Sunshine Home case, it might have to do with the number of beds that they would be permitted to build. Right? Um, so is it a one-time opportunity? Is it? No more than every year, every month, that kind of question. So how often can you kind of take on additional land from your neighbor? Um, and then I was wondering. And how many neighbors can you take twenty feet from? So if I have. A square lot and I want twenty feet from the north and the south and the east and then the west is my frontage on. A town road. Can I do that? For whatever my reasons not having to do with going for a buildable lot.
So. Well, in each of these cases, then you would not be creating a lot, though, right? It would be just taking segments of property to. You know, meet whatever, um, needs that you have, but, um, again. This would trigger a review by the planning board or zoning board, as it turns out, um, if you're going to end up creating a new lot or a new subdivision.
Okay, it might not create a new lot in twenty twenty-two. It might. Give you a a better opportunity in twenty thirty-two.
Okay, so incremental type of situation. I understand. Okay.
Right.
Interesting.
So, you know, strategic.
Yep.
And then I wondered. Uh, does this opportunity to take on twenty feet. Pertain to every kind of uh, zoning that the town has? Is it only for residential? Does it speak to? Residential, commercial, industrial, whatever kind of zoning you have. Can you, um? Can you do this? Maybe I'm a commercial entity and I, um, really want to take on twenty feet. Uh, from my neighbor because I need more parking and I want to cut down their trees and I want to cover it with asphalt. For instance.
Yep.
So. That was a question I had. Um. And then on the other side, how often could I sell twenty feet? So it's not only buy, it could be sell. How many? And will this trigger a tax assessment change? You know, are 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 there pieces of that that pertain to the way in which you calculate? Real estate taxes. So I had that question. Um. Then I. Uh, wondered if. Um, because I don't know if you know, but my actual profession is development. You you might have seen me only as a tree hugger in the past, but that's what I do. Um. Does the fact that someone can uh, be strategic and incremental? Mean that while you haven't had that many requests for lot line changes in the past couple of years, as you mentioned. Will this incentivize, uh, people to think even more strategically if they can start to incrementally? Collect land. Or move move property lines around. And then I thought, um, I know in Chappaquaia and Millwood. The lots are smaller, but in the West End lots are. Are larger and people don't really know what's going on with their neighbors. Would this kind of agreement, um, to let two neighbors move their lot line? Um, trigger perhaps a proper notice to neighbors within a certain amount of. Footage from the transaction. As part of the final. Uh, movement of the of the lot line. Because friends, in our area, people give each other, not everybody. Um, the right to. Uh, hunt during hunting season, the, you know, provided they have licensed the right to walk. The property to cut through from T-Town Trails to somewhere else that you're going. But, um. Someone who's walking all this, um, land might not know that the land no longer belongs to your buddy. For instance. And the new person who owns the twenty feet might not know. That, um, the next neighbor had given rights to a whole lot of people to do different things. So, those were some of my ideas for what's left.
Very good.
Undiscussed.
Yep, very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very, very good questions. Thank you.
Take my hand. Thank you.
Yep, yes. Thank you. Excellent.
I guess, I guess there's a need for, as as she just said. You know, to send out messages to the neighbors. Um, you know, to to say this is occurring. And you have three weeks to make a comment. Uh, we would like to know if this interferes with. Something. But, um, usually if you're gonna move the lot line, the person who has the property that is losing it. Um, you know. That's where this probably fits in.
Right. I I think also, I mean, to, uh, looking to Eldad and Tom with their experience in in commercial development. I I thought that was, those are very interesting points about, uh, what might happen in our hamlets in terms of this kind of strategic, uh. Incremental, uh, changes, a lot lines. To enable something to work for one applicant and very interesting. It might, it might be a very good positive incentive of for for developers. Uh, in our hamlets. But provided that we, you know, other, you know, neighbor, neighbors have noticed, I I, it's very interesting to think about. So I don't I don't know if, it sounds like it's the kind of stuff that happens down the Bronx and the city, but you know. Um. Whatever. So anyway, good. Um, anything else on, um, on the docket? I mean, we were talking about the planning board process. Was there anything else that we wanted to talk about on that planning board process?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Yes, I I have a couple of comments and questions.
Sure.
Um, I assume that that when we we are talking about getting ready for. Um, a project that there will be notification of the neighbors. Um, and that because that's a separate item, right? You know, so that would go forward anyway, because it's not mentioned anywhere in here in this document that we expected.
Are you talking about the rules of procedure or the lot line adjustment local law?
I'm sorry, I thought we were talking about the, uh. Your rules of procedure.
Yeah, okay. Right, so all all the notice requirements in the town code still do apply. Yes, this does not adjust those. Those notice requirements.
Then I then on four C, I have a question. Four C. Understand what that sentence means. I mean, I I could see a scenario where something was submitted, then all of a sudden, based on some comments. Um, you know, they found, oh, we have to make a change. So that would be a substitution. I mean, why wouldn't that be permitted?
This is part of the planning board application instructions currently. Um, and has been in place for for a while. I'll I'll let Sabrina explain it better. I'm sure she can explain it better because it has to do with the processing of the application. In her department.
I think Sabrina is coming down with her fourth version of COVID.
Yeah, um. Th- this is just in. So each application that comes in has to be stamped and processed and distributed accordingly. If an applicant comes in the day after we've processed this and wants to swap out the paper. It creates a whole host of issues, so we don't allow submissions. There have been one-off instances where we haven't gotten to processing the application and the applicant wants to change things and we give them back everything. And we say, okay, you fix that sheet of paper.
Okay.
And then give us new applications. That's what that means.
All right, so that works for me. That's okay.
I knew you could explain it better than I could. Thank you, Sabrina.
No problem. Please don't take that out.
Yes.
All right, um, anybody have any comments, uh, on the next things? I'm up to number seven. My public hearings.
So are the only two substantive changes the ones you pointed out, Jennifer?
Well. No, so this is, this is a brand new document. Um, and it pulled information from a couple of different sources. It pulled information from a couple of different pieces of application materials that are given to applicants. Um, including pre, like, pre-submission meeting requirements and then the application form itself. Um, it pulled information from like the open meetings laws, some other communities rules of procedure. Um, so it 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 pulled from a couple, a bunch of different sources. Those two things that I pointed out at the beginning. Were just things that I specifically tailored based on your discussion at your last meeting.
Got it.
Yes.
So I think those two things are great. They make a lot of sense.
Yeah, uh. I want to come back to that, but, um. Uh, Dick, you asked if there was something before number seven. I. I have, uh, number five C.
Okay, then go, you go.
Of setting agendas, um. I, this language, I think, Jennifer, unless I'm wrong, because in our last, uh, iteration of, uh, this work, which is excellent. Um, I thought you mentioned that this particular item, maybe I'm wrong, was, uh. The co- the the product of some research you've done of of other boards and how they handle, uh, agendas, um. I I guess I. I guess I'm a little bit, it seems like it's pretty hard and fast in terms of, you know, what we can do and how we can do it, this language. Um. That, um, we have to have a unanimous consent to address some, uh, uh, an item that's not on the agenda. Seems to me to be a little bit harsh. I don't know why we would, we would want to to put that. Seems onerous to me and, um, it it says that. Any motion to amend the agenda to include items not already listed shall be made at the start of a meeting. I mean, these are, I I don't understand the the necessity for these, um, for these stipulations.
So this is based on Robert's Rules of Order, um, which is sort of the default rules of procedure. Um, for for almost any board, um, any deliberative board. Um, so that those are. Just processes that are are spelled out in in Robert's Rules of Order and that that's why they're in there that way.
You know, it's interesting, Robert's Rules of Order, um. I mean, they're the the gold standard, right? But they're also the gold standard that. Have been put together specifically, I think, for environments that can be extremely contentious. And, um, like Parliament, et cetera, et cetera. So, uh, I think that perhaps we don't need to be so hard on ourselves, um, on this particular subject. Um, so I I would question whether we wanna, we wanna follow through. Uh, with with that part of the proposal. So, uh, of of the, of of the, uh, of the document here. Um, so Dick, that was, that was the one thing that jumped out at me, uh, number five.
Okay, good, good. Dick, you had some other points?
Um. Yeah, the on seven B. It, um. The chair shall have a discretion to direct town staff. So they can address anybody that's a staff member in town. Is that what we are doing? The I, the word seems.
Which one, seven B?
Yeah, seven B, the last line, uh, next.
Oh, okay.
Down near the bottom, the chair shall also have a discretion to direct town staff. Now, that certainly makes sense if it's town development staff. Um, and legal counsel, but maybe town is too broad a word.
Well, actually, you know, our procedure has been that we've always taken a vote and we've had a resolution, a a a motion to direct town staff. So that is, uh, that's a good point, Dick. That's a, it's a little bit of a change there, um, and I'm happy to do what we've done in the past and as we have. You know, we take a vote, we're comfortable with that, that's that's fine.
This section in particular is just dealing with the procedure that we just had with the first application on your agenda. So there wouldn't be an opportunity for the full board to have the motion to direct preparation of the resolution. Um, it would be for when you have an application that the first time it's on, you're having it on for public hearing and resolution. And then that instance, we need somebody to to authorize.
Okay, so then. I I you keep the word town, but just put in appropriate town staff. Not as opposed to anybody.
We can.
That's interesting.
Okay.
Well.
Now, down and.
I'm gonna have a hard time directing anything from other departments, believe me. I I'd like to be successful with my family, never mind other departments.
Yeah, well, 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 Robert, you know, we may not be in these seats forever.
Yes, I understand.
Okay, F. Um. F is, I think that this is the right thing we should be doing. But I don't see how field trips. Uh, can work out then.
Site visits would be an exception to this. This is just that, you know, you shouldn't be. Getting together for coffee with an applicant and their consultants and and talking about an application outside of a regular meeting. Um, right. Site visits are something that's handled. Separate apart from from F.
I don't know quite what to do with it, but it sounds, um, you know, that we, we'll go to a field thing and, um. Uh, you know, we're just going to. Be, we'll be asked questions and we're we're gonna have to come up with what we're gonna do. We're not gonna answer the questions or say, thank you very much. We'll take that into. Consideration or something like that. Um, so that we don't get into, uh, what we. You know, this is somewhat severe. Like, you know, compared to what we do. But it's not bad. I mean, it just, I think it needs the caveat or something about field trips.
Well, the site visits, uh, there's another section that goes through those kinds of requirements and the procedures.
Okay. Site visits, yeah. So, but I think this part of this F is kind of. Um.
If we said, if we started it out by saying except for site visits. As per paragraph nine, the planning board does not intend to interact.
Hmm.
Would that help you, Dick?
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, something like that, nope, go to. You know, section nine or whatever it is. Yeah, that's that's fine. This is minor, but. Heck, why not? Okay, um.
Yeah, so nine deals with site visits, uh, seven F is more the.
Yeah, I like the call. Like nine.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so. Um, I'm on eight. Uh, eight B. I think eight B is fine, never mind. J. Interested parties or their reps not in attendance at the meeting. May address the planning board by written submission prior to the close of the public hearing. So. If it, if the meeting is a public hearing, how can they do a written submission prior to the close of the public hearing?
Public hearing could be continued beyond one name.
Okay. Yeah, so that may, I think. Yeah, so that may, I think that might be helpful to add to that. You know, unless, you know, something like, unless the um, you know, or a comment that this. I'm not quite sure what the right words are, but something like this, um not being in attendance is, is um, something that really is most pertinent when uh, the public hearing is about to be closed. Um, and the app, you know, the representatives or something have been notified or something, you know, that.
You you raise actually a good point there, because we've, we've many times, we have been in a closing, uh, at a public hearing. We've closed the comments, we've heard from uh, someone who's given us a verbal report. And then they would like also to submit something in writing, and I think very often we have specifically said you can submit that in a letter form if you get it into us within the next uh, X number days, week, et cetera. If we don't have a separate public comment period after a larger application. So I I I think that's what you're, you're, you're drilling at.
Yep.
Okay. So we said, if close a public hearing or otherwise provided.
Okay. All right, I'm done. Very good document. It was easy to read, and um, and I appreciate, you know, the work that went into it.
El Dan, anything? Tom, anything?
Yeah, I'd like to ask, and I I think that uh, El Dan touched on this a minute ago. I mean, it's, there, there are, I think, three items that I was able to find that looked like they were getting at what I, what I believe was the, the purpose of this initiative, which is to sort of make things quicker. Uh, give greater clarity to the process, uh, not not only to the applicants, but to ourselves. Um, and to help, uh, you know, help, help people get through in a way that doesn't seem to be an onerous process and um, the single meeting, uh, and the au- authority to uh, given to the, to the chairman to go ahead and work with staff to provide a draft resolution without a vote of the of the board, I think is a a great move. And I think that we really saw that tonight. It was really refreshing to be able to um, work with these folks in such an expeditious way. Uh, I hope we can do more of that. I think the sketch plans is a great idea, and of course, it depends on whether the applicants are going to be willing to go through that step of the process. I I guess we're not actually requiring it, but we're we're making it clear that that's what we would like to see. Um, and uh, we, you know, rely on the town staff to promote that and see if we can do it. Um, those were the couple of things that I think are, get to the heart of what I thought we were looking to do. Most of this, uh, uh, thanks, Jennifer, for putting this together. It, it seems to be an um a document which sort of memorializes mostly what we already do and the ways in which we already do it. And I guess, uh, I'm sure that's helpful to us to, to re- to remind ourselves, you know, what we're, what we're about and ha- and and how we, how we go about it. But I'm, I wonder if we're missing something. I mean, I just wonder if there's a and maybe we're doing enough by um, the single meeting business and the sketch plans, but uh, are we missing something that in the, in the procedures we have that could you know, help, just help make this whole process quicker and easier without, without um you know, without, without running afoul of what our, what our responsibilities are to the town and and to the state law as a planning board? I just wonder if there's something that, or maybe it's just the way it is, and that's the way it has to be. Uh, so that, that's the comment I have. And I don't know where we go with this document. Does it become something which is, is it uh how does it get memorialized as a document? Uh, does it go, it doesn't go into the, to the town code, I don't think? Or maybe other amendments to the town code that might be required? Uh, where do we go with this?
So no amendments to the town code would be required to implement this. Um, this would get implemented by a motion, um, by the planning, you know, motion to approve or adopt the, the rules of procedure. Uh, the rules of procedure that can then be distributed with the, by the development department with application forms. When someone has a request for, hey, I, I want to do X, Y, and Z on my property. What, what, what do I need to know? You know, when they first approach the development department, this could be a useful tool. It could be posted on the town's website under the planning boards page, um, to help applicants and members of the public kind of understand, um, what it is that you do and how you do it. Um, I will have to double check and see if it also needs to be sort of ratified by the town board. Um, I can look into that, but certainly the first step would be for your board to to make a motion to, to adopt the rules of procedure.
Would it be inappropriate to, and and maybe it wouldn't be helpful, but it might be. This is a s- a seven, eight-page document. Uh, I don't know how many pages it is. It's extremely thorough, and I think it's very well done. But, you know, handing this out to an applicant and telling them, you know, this is the way it works. Um, for all of our applicants, it doesn't necessarily, you know, get the point across, right? Because it's just a lot of text for somebody to 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 work through. With a, like a bullet point of the key things, uh, uh, like a bullet point by one pager. I, I don't know, it just helped to make it, because if somebody looks at this, the, the the reaction to the public might be, gee whiz, look at all of this stuff that I have to worry about.
Yeah.
And actually, they don't have to worry about a lot of this stuff. Uh, the things that they do have to pay attention to maybe could be you know, condensed down into like a, a one-page synopsis.
Yeah, I think applicants are going to be looking at items three and four, the, the pre pre-application requirements and the submission requirements. I know from, from my practice, when I'm representing private applicants before boards, you know, I check the code and I check to see if the board has rules of procedure exactly like this, to see, you know, do I need to bug the planning board secretary to find out how many copies of, of the materials do they need, um, things like that? What, what is, are there any particular, um, you know, e- every board has its own sort of, uh, you know, um peculiarities, so to speak, as far as how it conducts its meetings. So I like to look and see, is there anything particularly unique about this community, about how they, they run their meetings? Um, like, for example, some zoning boards don't wait until the end of the meeting, until all the applications are heard before they deliberate on any application. Um, some zoning boards just take it application by application, so things like that you you want to take a look at. So I think applicants are going to know from the subject headings, what they're looking at, what, what, what they're looking for. Um, but yeah, I mean, we, we can look into seeing if there's a way to condense this into a one pager, sort of the, of the, the hot topics. Um, and condense it into a sort of a, an executive summary bullet point sheet.
Yeah, because the, the, the perception, the, the, the perception out there, uh, as we well know uh, people saying, oh, jeez, I gotta go before the Newcastle Planning Board, this is gonna be a nightmare. We've heard that before. And uh, a lot of it is, is, you know, how you communicate to people, um, to uh to, to sort of try and engage them in a way which is, is dispel some of that anxiety.
Yeah.
The uh the other, Jennifer, the other point is, I think a lot of people are gonna look at seven B. Because seven B gives them a, a path to either a first meeting resi- you know, resolution and approval or whatever, comments, uh, whatever, but it, it, it gives I would think some hope to people who are able to read, you know, so many pages that this might be a way that, that we can get to our project uh endpoint faster, you know, because it'll if it's a type-two action pursuant to cer- to seeker, that that's not a problem, well then half of the work goes away, or half of the, probably two-thirds of the time goes away that takes.
Yeah, no, that's a good point.
And one of the other issues that we have is, um and, and we've gone back and forth on this with the ZBA, um, and we haven't really done it enough with ERB. But when there are going to be referrals uh to other boards, it seems to me that we really ought to uh give some guidance to the applicants ASAP upfront, let them know what we're doing. So, for example, if it is the, going to be the intention is the planning board that we are going to move forward with approval and condition our approval on approve, you know, the, the zoning board approval, so go for it, you know, with the zoning board, or it's coming back to us from the zoning board. Um, again, I think alacrity in terms of those kinds of referrals would really be helpful. Uh, we've had a couple of times, it seems to me, where we've been a little bit delayed in that referral process or exhorting the uh applicant to move forward with uh that, that, uh, that other piece. By the same token, not that it necessarily speeds things up, but I think we are missing the boat sometimes when we don't get the uh, the expertise of the ERB uh, coming in on some of our wetland issues. So I think we, you know, we used to always do that, uh, when I was on ERB a hundred years ago. Um, that was always something that we, that the planning board did and something that the ERB always did weighed in a lot. And uh, not that it's to slow it up, but if we do that upfront, we recognize it's something that we'd like to hear from ERB right away, for example, or Conservation Board or whatever board it might be, that might be helpful to the applicant as well as the process to identify that upfront and and make that referral, uh, get it going right away.
Good, I like it.
So do you want to add something to the rules to say that the board will, um, uh, will make its referrals to other town agencies and boards at its, at the earliest point possible in the application or something along those lines?
Yes, I think that would be good, but I think it really, it, again, we really have to lean on staff and and their discretion on their good judgment to lead us and say, you know, uh, you know, we see this, I mean, Sabrina always has it, for example, in our memos. But that's also after we've looked at it, we've, you know, it's been around a little bit. You know, perhaps the applicant should be told right away, you know, you're gonna have to get a, a variance, so you may as well get going on this, or you're, you're gonna have to it's likely they're gonna refer this to ERB. So again, uh, I like to depend on the expertise and the judgment of Bob and Dennis and Sabrina and Tom, uh, to help us, uh, you know, we've got great staff.
If, if I may interject a minute, so we have as-of-right referrals for every application to the county, you know, if it meets certain things to the fire, EVAC, um, Millwood West End, right? Those are our standards. If an application doesn't rise to the level of the ERB, you know, then that's something that we need to hear from the board that you want ERB's input. It's really the, it's really, when it comes to ERB, if it involves zoning you know, we always prefer, if, you know, applicants have the right by, by code, to go right to the zoning board before they come to you. Oftentimes, they, you know, we send them to you first, so that you can inform the ZBA of their application. But really, that referral has to come from you, and usually it doesn't happen until after you've reviewed the application and are comfortable with the variance. So, you know, I don't want to create another process here.
Right.
You know, that, that's different than how we handle it now, because we do do those standard referrals, which if they are code requirement, they get referred automatically. It's a matter of whether or not you want a definitive response. You know, the county will always respond, the, the, the fire department, the police department, they don't necessarily respond.
Right.
Millwood West End Advisory Board doesn't necessarily respond. Um, you know, so it's really, you know, if you want the Conservation Board or, or the, the ERB, that has to be, I think, a more direct referral from your.
Okay. Okay, I, I, I think also even, uh, I know th- there are provisions to the code, but sometimes we've asked the ARB for input on, on things before us, even though it was not really required, we just wanted to get their benefit of their thoughts.
Right, and and so, right, but also, you know, each board operates in relation to their purview under the code. So if you want a referral, for example, with the ARB on an application, then your referral has to be pretty specific as to why you want to hear from them at this point, because they're built into the process at a different point.
Right, difference time, yes.
Exactly, and so it's, so in all of their, their authority, like your authority is der- derived out of the code. You know, so, so that's kind of how we operate from a staff perspective, instead of up to, to, to just kind of, uh, what's your opinion?
Good, okay. Should we put something in that's, you know, somewhere in the bottom that says that, that, um on occasion, uh, not on occasion, but as, as deemed appropriate by the chairman, um, some projects may be advanced to other boards for their review.
Well, I don't think it should be the chairman, I think it should be the, uh, the board.
Okay, fine. Now, they may ask, well, what does that mean? And uh, what Sabrina just said is what it means. Hey, look, if you've got some problems with the site, it's gonna be automatically transferred. Now, sometimes, you know, if you make the board angry, I mean, uh, that's probably not the right answer. But you, if you have, uh, you know, so a lot of little things that, uh, you know, and one big thing that, you know, doesn't really fit being, you know, sent over to another board. We would have, we may re- uh, require that it be submitted.
Right, and they, it may just put more of an onus on us when we first look at the application to see, you know, to be more disciplined and identify some more issues, so that if we're going to be asking some other board for some uh, input, we need to do it sooner than later, again, to keep the process going and and moving along. Because there have been times in the past where that referral came much later. It, it was a coordinated review in some cases, and it was still kind of s- slogged away, and of course, you know, it creates problems. Yes, but, but I think that, I think that issue of a, of a bullet uh schedule really makes great sense for the applicants. Because that really is one of the key things we're trying to do here, is just make this process uh more understandable um, for an applicant coming in. I mean, I, I, you know, for everyday, uh, you know, applicant. I mean, the professionals, they're, look, they're, they've got their, their staff and they're, they're, they know what the deal is. Okay, so, um, I'll make some notes. Anyone else who has any notes, uh, pass them on to Jennifer. And uh, let's see if we can take a look at this also on the next time we meet. If, will that work with you, Jennifer? Is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, okay, great. All righty. Okay, and I think that's about it. Is there a motion now to close the meeting?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? I, okay, well, thanks very much, guys.